Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassia Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin this evening, if we could take a moment to remember the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King. Thank you. If we could have the roll, please.
Alderman Nichols. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Sevenik. Alderman Langdon. Alderman Kruger. Alderman Tomgroudi. Alderman Tedgroudi. Alderman Repella.
The first item in the agenda this evening is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak this evening?
Sandra DeBeille-Taylor, 545 Broad Street. I wanted to comment on the proposed creation of TIF 14. I realize at this point it's being held, but in the minutes it states that I was opposed to it, so I wanted to clarify to you my opposition. It's not that that area doesn't need help. In fact, I would be in favor of a joint TIF with the Fox Crossing that would look at 9th Street north to the 441 intersection. That entire area is in need of rehabilitation. And for years, people have been walking along 47 Appleton Street or Appleton Road and creating their own trail. And at some point in time, someone's going to get severely injured. And I think the only way we can do that because of all the islands is to do an intermunicipal TIF. But, and that's part of the reason it's not that I'm opposed to working on that area. It's vital to the City of Manassia. It should be a Darboy or a West Town, Anina. I mean, that's right off of the interstate. That should be a thriving commercial district, and it's not. Why I was specifically opposed to what is being proposed at this time was that, number one, the Shopko Plaza minus the Shopko building is primarily a facelift. There is no guarantee of any new stores coming in, any new, you know, big thriving generator. There's nothing that's going to spark more investment in that area, at least nothing guaranteed. You can throw out logos, and you can throw out a Starbucks and a Trader Joe's and whatever, but there's nothing in concrete, and it's basically just a facelift. My other opposition was that I don't believe it meets the but-for criteria. And the but-for is part of what has to be approved at the state level. And to explain that, it says each criteria is important to ensure the TIF project is beneficial for all taxpayers. Many consider this the first criteria, the but-for test, the most important. Would this development occur but for the financial support of public tax dollars? And in particular, the area where the former Gardenview Restaurant was. That area was already approved by the site, or the site plan was approved, and the project was going forward back in August. The Plan Commission met and reviewed it and approved it. And on their actual application for the site plan review from Prime Space LLC, the proposed time schedule they have written down, construction is planned to start immediately upon approval. That was without any TIF dollars. Furthermore, it says part of the but-for is, would this development occur if the project was scaled back or timeframe pushed out? We're already pushing the timeframe out. Did similar projects proceed without the use of TIF? And you can't get any more similar than the corner of Oneida Street and Midway Road, the former South Side gas station, the same developers, Prime Space LLC, is building a strip mall. It's currently under construction without the use of TIF money. So for those two reasons alone, it doesn't qualify as a TIF, in my book. And then the third leg to this whole thing is outside the project boundaries is the street improvements for Valley Road and Drumcore Drive, equalling $450,000. That's just a tag-along. That's just something in my book the mayor put in the TIF so as not to have to be part of the levy limit, just like we did with our budget this year. We moved $100,000 out of salaries into TIF to get under the levy limit. So we're basically creating a TIF to pay for road improvements. That is precisely why I was opposed to this TIF. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Is there anyone else this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the report of department heads, staff, and consultants. Do we have a motion for the minutes and communications today? Alderman Sevenik.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for the council to approve Minutes A through I and Communications M and N.
There's a motion and a second to accept the minutes and communications discussion. Did you have discussions, Stan?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. I was reading the RDA minutes, and it was my understanding that two council members were present and were asked to leave because they went into closed session. I would like to find out exactly the ruling on that. I believe that those council members should have been permitted to stay. I have a communication that came from the DA's office that if a government body is a subunit of a parent body, the subunit must allow members of the parent body to attend its open session and closed session meetings unless the rules of the parent body or subunit provide otherwise. I'm on the protocol committee. We have never changed that rule. That is Wisconsin Statute 19.89. Where enough non-members of a subunit attend the subunit meetings that a quorum of the parent body is present, a meeting of the parent body occurs, the notice requires obviously Wisconsin Statute 19.84, you know, the information that often that Debbie already provides, which is provided. So my question is, I would like if the city attorney could find out for certain if council members are not allowed to be in the closed meetings of the RDA. The RDA, to me, is a subunit of the city. They cannot operate without us. Their funding cannot happen without us. They meet here at City Hall, so it was my understanding, too, that they did allow in the City of Anina council members to attend any closed meeting of the, any other committees or subunits in their communities. So I'm not trying to find out if it's wrong. What I want to know is, I want to see an exact ruling whether a council member can be there. I chose not to be there because I had a feeling that this is what was going to happen. And then when I picked up my packet and read those minutes, I realized there were two Aldermen there that were asked that they would leave.
Did you want a memo in the next packet, Stan? Okay. Oh, the attorney is leaving tomorrow, so it might have to be in the following packet, but we'll get something for you. Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Looking at the regular meeting of the Water and Light Commission, December 19, 2018, there was a motion by Commissioner Merk, a second by Commissioner Cordes, was unanimously approved on roll call to request relocation of the boat launch due to costs on another intake options, and provided details on the potential use of the basin as a marina to the park board, just like the state that I'm thinking that if we're moving in that direction, it definitely will impact the Jefferson Park master plan, and certainly the lighthouse theme that we plan on doing, if there's a marina, there may be some, with the plan, might be some relocations of different things. So I don't know how far this is moving, but if it is moving in that direction, I really think that we should probably relook at the Jefferson Park master plan again. And we should probably notify the State of Wisconsin if we're going to have a marina down there, that we put in a static bridge on Racine Street, and so we don't have to have any sailboats or bigger boats going downtown, and then we don't need a drawbridge.
So the motion that was there relates to the water intake? And a water intake for a water utility has to be at least 1,000 feet from any boat launch. The current boat launch and the proposed site was less than 1,000 feet. So what the Utility Commission was doing was asking if the park board would consider allowing the boat launch to be relocated in such a way that it would be at least 1,000 feet away from that intake, and that may be more cost advantage to both the utility and the community if the utility paid to move the boat launch rather than move the intake. So that's what they asked to study. It will be on the next park board agenda to see what those potentials are, and then the park board would make a recommendation back if they think that those are reasonable opportunities for us to further look at, because you're right, they would change the Jefferson Park master plan. So that's why it was coming back to the park board.
And I think it'd just be wise for us to pull back, take a good look at it. And what is the next park board meeting for the public?
It's the second Tuesday of the month at 6:00.
So Abraham Lincoln's birthday on the 12th?
If that's the second Tuesday, yes.
Okay. So that's Honest Dave's birthday. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I would, they all mean, they all are the same, so if I could talk about E, J, and M all together, please. They all have to do with creating the TIF 14. Is that okay? Okay. So, let's see again. Okay, don't eat that. All right. During the five-minute talk in the beginning, Sandra talked about concern, one of her concerns was that nothing is guaranteed coming in. I have quite a few concerns, and that's one of them. So I guess now that Shopko's gone, and that was my fear when they said they sold out the pharmacy. I knew Shopko wouldn't last, but I didn't know they were going to shut down a lot of them. So I know that store is not owned, that block building is not owned by this person, but it's still part of that mini mall. So to me, you can't look at, oh, that's not part of the mall. It's part of the mall, and that's why people go there to the mini mall, was because of I guess I'd like a lot of things, Sam, if you could have for us before the next meeting or when we're supposed to talk about this. At the joint meeting, you guys had a lot of discussion, and at the Plan Commission meeting, you guys had a lot of discussion, and the memorandum here from you is a lot of discussion. And right now, I think, I don't think, maybe I'm the only one that doesn't know everything, but I hardly know anything. And one of the things that, I'm 61 years old, and my first fitness club I belonged to I was 20 years old, and a couple of months after that, I decided, what the heck is this? What am I doing? So I joined the Anina YMCA and been there ever since. I've seen those fitness clubs come and go many, many times, not just around this area, but everywhere. They're pretty much a dime a dozen. So they have a lease on that building, that block that they're in. We weren't told how long that lease is, so I'd like to know how long that lease is because when that lease is up, you see a lot of businesses, when you read that they're either they're leaving, a lot of them say because they're not renewing their lease. And I have a real, real big fear about Experian Fitness, and that's his draw, and I'm really, really scared about that. So I guess, you know, if you could get, just put a lot of information for us so that we can see what's coming in. Is anything coming in when we're going to create that TIF? We're putting a facade on that building and creating a TIF to put a facade on the building, that concerns me a lot. A facade doesn't bring in business, I don't believe. Could be wrong, but that's just my thought. And a TIF is supposed to create development, but I don't, there's no development around that area for that TIF to develop. And Ms., and Sandra mentioned roads. She's absolutely right about that. Putting a TIF to fix those roads in, that's not what a TIF's for, what we're creating this TIF for. So I have a concern about that. I just have a lot, a lot of concerns about this TIF, but my big one is how long that lease is for. And just, yeah, all the information you can give us, I know the Plan Commission said that they, they're in favor of the TIF. The Joint Review Board says they're in favor of the TIF, but I just wonder if those, if those two, the Plan Commission and the Review Board actually looked at all the questions that I have and concerns to be able to say that they're good with this. So, all right, thank you.
Alderman Groudi.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a comment on J, the Planning Commission minutes. That was on the first January 8, 2019. Maybe, I haven't seen this before, maybe it happened, but I don't know. We are taking emails now and putting them into our minutes. Are we okay with that? Are we opening up Pandora's Box here, whatever, you get 17, 18 emails? Does every email have to be extruded into that minutes? And if, item E there, public comments, there was no one there, but yet we can accept email from someone. No problem with it. I'm glad that she spoke what she had to say. I think there was very important points. But how do we know that's a legitimate email address from that person? I just don't know what the protocol of this is, and I just want, be aware, if this is something we're going to accept, then we might come up bartered with emails on certain things, too. I don't know who to ask. I'm just maybe venting here or just stating my case here.
We did express that concern during the meeting as well, that typically we wouldn't do that. We did have that, so I thought it made sense to read it at that point. Typically, the public could email the members themselves, so if they felt that that was appropriate, that they wanted to get the members to have that information. So typically, I wouldn't have them. That was more the case, and it just happened that Director Schrader did bring it, so I did comment that this is what was sent in from the public that day.
Alderman Sevenik.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I forgot to bring this particular one up. I was just going to take it up with you or someone, probably Josh, but in the minutes of the Board of Health, Todd Drew gave an update of the Manassia Public Works facilities' upcoming demolition starting in February. I sure hope.
Cancelled.
I just sure hope you guys don't do that. We need to get this financing question taken care of first before, but I've seen where things like this happen, so I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention.
There won't be any demolition until we have a signed contract with a contractor and the bids and everything are received. So we won't be taking anything down until we make sure we can build something new.
All right. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor.
The sentence after that in the Board of Health minutes, December 7, behind that sentence that Alderman Sevenik had mentioned, the next sentence is, RR Donley is currently obtaining quotes for asbestos removal and demolition. Don't we own the property? And, or is RR Donley going to take out the asbestos yet? This will start in April 2019.
I can clarify that with Todd and get back to you on exactly what he means and what the timeline is.
Okay. Sam, a question for you, probably. There is, RR Donley currently obtaining bits?
No, I don't know what that is.
Okay, that's fine.
That's no longer RR Donley.
Yes, I understand that. That's why I'm asking this question. I thought there might have been some, some language that they had to remove then. And another question is for the fire chief. Along with your minutes, there was a couple documents, three, four pages of Northeast Wisconsin Technical College Fire Assigned Student Placement Agreement. And is this kind of just an informative, or is this going to, something going to happen?
The contract for the NWTC?
Yes.
Hopefully, something happens. We were looking at, because we've had so little involvement with interns from Fox Valley Tech, we would really appreciate that NWTC would take part in an internship program. So it would be a document very similar to the one we have with Fox Valley Tech so that we can acquire as many interns as possible to come through our fire department.
Okay. And I don't know if the legal end of it with the city attorney has been looked at through that and the liability. I mean, there's, you guys are in the emergency situations all the time, and to have a student, and it does a lot of times, say, observing, but we know even with a student observing, we've seen explosions this year in the State of Wisconsin and a lot of other terrible things. And I'm just wondering if, this day and age, if we want to get into something like this and instead of, when we need people, we interview them, you guys have that process, and you put them through all the testing and determine if you, then they have a grace period or a time where you can cut them loose if you don't think they make the grade for us. So, and how many of these would we be doing?
Typically, well, right now, we have three from Fox Valley Tech, and we would be getting one student from NWTC. I'm not sure how, in the future, this is kind of a pilot program for them. This would be the first time that they have had interns come into a fire department. Nobody's ever asked them to do that program before, so it would be one to start with.
I think it should go through the Personnel Committee and, of course, with the review of our legal counsel. And also, where does, where do these people ride in the truck? You putting them all back like when you, no, that's probably before you.
They ride in the cab. They ride on the inside.
So, but we have, we have four firefighters for the cab. What, do they sit on the council on the floor?
No. Most often, there's three firefighters, and if the trucks are full, then they would ride with the shift commander.
Okay. Okay. That was Chief Len that told us when he started, used to ride on the back of the truck.
They did, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to respond to item J, the Plan Commission meeting minutes, since the topic came up, and as your representative on the Plan Commission, I can assure you that the, each commissioner shared your concerns. They share your concerns about this possible TIF, and we, it was discussed at great length at the Plan Commission meeting. I think the news of the specific closure came just the day before the Plan Commission meeting, and then since then, we've heard more news again. So I think that, I know that I'm appreciative of the developer agreeing to take a step back and sort of reevaluate the situation for both himself and the city, I think, and we can look forward to hearing more about it in the future.
And just to clarify, was it two or three days after the Plan Commission meeting that the announcement of the closure was?
It was exactly the next day, so.
Okay. I know it was after the meeting.
We certainly, you know, shared those concerns and specific discussions, but we, at that time, did not have that announcement. And after that announcement came, we certainly want to make sure, take a step back and reevaluate the whole situation, make sure we're bringing forward the best possibility for the City of Manassia. If I may, also, I was just reading the minutes of the Board of Health for Alderman Taylor. I was just reading the minutes that you were referring to, and so what that was is, we were looking at getting our own kind of quotes for asbestos and asbestos removal, just to, so we could have a knowledge of where the DOT may lie and something of that nature. So that's where that was from. Yeah. Yeah, we asked, yeah, we asked for the quotes. He stated RR Donley just as a reference to that building.
Alderman Repella.
Thank you. The fire chief. Chief, I should have asked this during our joint meeting, but I didn't do that. The interns from those other schools, I mean, from Northeastern Wisconsin Technical College, do other cities use a bunch of interns?
All the cities that are career departments have interns. It used to be just the departments in the valley. Now it's spread. There used to be like six departments in the valley. Grand Shute, Appleton, Anina, Manassia, Oshkosh, and Kokona. Now there's like 20-some departments that use them.
And they all use them, they get them from Fox Valley Tech?
Correct.
Okay, because you just said that there was only one, one person from the northeastern Wisconsin, so Green Bay must not use them as a resource?
Green Bay uses the kids from the Fox Valley Tech.
Oh, okay.
Because it's expanded. Over the years, it used to be just the six departments here in the valley. Now it's Marshfield, Wausau, you name it, they have interns from, from the tech. So that's why, that's why when we used to have probably four to six interns a semester, sometimes we're lucky if we get one, because they're so spread out now.
Also, now, many of the other technical schools at Wisconsin Rapids and Gateway and Wausau Technical School, they're not supplying the technical, the fire interns?
Right. Some of them are, the schools are so small, they don't have an internship program.
Okay, understood. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, seeing no, Alderman Taylor.
I just wanted to get this in that, in our packet, there was, Manassia residents are invited to a design workshop. are invited to a design workshop, and this is, the workshop is on January 29th, from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the City Hall here. And this is in regards to the Water Street, future Water Street, the city plans to reconstruct that area. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Glad to see everyone read their minutes this week. Item G is the consent agenda. There are 10 items. The minutes to approve from the Common Council. It wasn't cold till yesterday, actually, of January 7th. The Administration Committee recommendations from January 7th to amend the City of Menasha Public Records Notice and Policy, to charge five cents for each black and white copy and 13 cents for each color copy. The Board of Public Works recommendations from January 7th, the recommendation to award the Community Way New Storm Sewer Water Main and Street Construction to Ficker and Sons in the amount of $247,358. The Special Board of Works meeting recommendations from tonight, January 21st, the recommendation to award the Province Terrace Trail to Yankee General Contractors in the amount of $641,638.75. The Personnel Committee recommendation from January 7th to update the Code of Conduct in regards to the USDA Enroll Development Funds. The Menasha Joint Finance and Personnel Committee recommendations from January 9th to fill the vacancy created by a retirement no earlier than February 1st. The Fire Science Student Placement Agreement with Northeast Technical College, and the contract extension for statewide structural collapse team members with the state of Wisconsin through June of 2019. And the Board of Public, Board of Park and Recreation, the recommendations from January 8th for the proposed fee changes to 12 recreation programs for 2019, and the Plan Commission recommendation from January 8th for the CSM Lot Consolidation of 455 and 435 Baldwin Street and 981 Plank Road. Does anyone wish to have items separated this evening? Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to separate items 2, 3, 4, and 9.
Any others? Seeing no others, is there a motion for the remaining items?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. At this time, I move for consent agenda items approval 1, 5, 6, 7, and 8 as read, and 10 as read.
There's a motion and a second for items 1, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 10. Could we have a roll call vote, please? Oops, I'm too fast, huh?
Motion carried on, roll call 8-0.
Item 2 is the Public Records Notice and Policy. Do we have a motion? Item, Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of amending the City of Menasha Public Records Notice and Policy, Paragraph 4A and B, to change the copies to five cents for each black and white page and 13 cents each for a color page.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. I do understand that the reasoning behind this, for some reason, I just do not think that the charges are appropriate. I think that they're too small. I'm not going to vote for this. I just have not seen enough data to make me feel comfortable that we subsidize people for open records. If I were to go to Home Depot or Office Depot, excuse me, or something like that, my copies would be five, 10 times this cost. So I know we're not here for profit, but we also, the taxpayers shouldn't have to subsidize people for this equipment and the cost of these items. I mean, if I recall, the color copy that we recently purchased was, what, how much was that, Mayor? Offhand, your...
I don't know what that was.
It was like in the tens of thousands of dollars. It was like close to 60 grand or something like that. It was a ridiculous amount. So to charge five cents and 13 cents is, I'm not in favor of this.
Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. Cook Galiazi, do you have any idea what other communities charge compared to City of Menasha?
No, I do not. I have, Attorney Captain could probably answer that, because she's been working on getting this put together. It was something that was required with the change in legislation recently, Attorney Captain, I believe.
Attorney Captain, did you want to comment?
Whatever other communities are charging is not relevant to this decision. The only thing that we're able to charge according to Wisconsin law is the actual cost of a copy. And so, and I didn't bring it today, maybe...
It was in the last packet, though.
Administrative Services Director may recall, but as an example, the Attorney General's Office changed their fees because they hadn't looked at them for a while, and this is really where it comes from, because there was a case that came out, and then the Attorney General gave an opinion, and they were just giving communities warnings about, hey, you better check to make sure how much you're charging, because it's likely you're overcharging. And ours were 25 cents per copy. And let's see, did I have on here? Yeah, the IT supervisor had informed that the actual copy cost is between .048 cents to .125 cents per page. So that's, you know, almost five cents. We round it up, and almost 13 cents. Again, that was rounded up. But I want to say they're charging three cents?
Yes. The state level, they're charging, I think, like three cents, and I think color, I think, was like six or seven cents. It was way lower than ours is actually.
Right.
And you have to remember that we are not allowed to factor in employee time, preparation time, copy time at all. It's only for the toner, the cost that we would get charged per, because we actually do get billed a certain amount for black toner per copy and also color copy that we get charged on the use of our copy machine. So we did factor in depreciation amount into this. We factored paper, we factored toner, we factored in the cost we actually get billed per copy, if it's black and white or colored. So we put those four factors in, is where we came up with the charge of roughly a little less than five cents or a little less than 13 cents for actual copy cost, but we cannot factor in anybody's time to get the prep or to pull it or to copy it or assemble it or mail it.
So we could charge up to 25 cents?
No. No. Those are things that we cannot charge.
Got you. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Alderman Repella?
Ah, thank you, Mayor. Keep it on. John, how much, how much money are we talking here? How much money do we actually have earned or get from, from the copy, people getting copies from us?
There isn't much for our department, but I think from the police department and from the library, they would be the more heavier users of it than we actually would have for providing some copies.
I know, I can go to them.
I mean, we're maybe talking probably not even, I wouldn't even say probably even, not even $1,000, probably. It's probably, probably less than that.
Well, I know, like, when you go to the library and you get a copy, it's 10 cents for a black and white, and then you, they get a little bit more for a, for a colored copy.
And they're on a separate contract than the rest of the city is on?
But those aren't considered open records. You're not requesting an open record.
Oh, gotcha.
You're making a personal copy.
Correct. Okay, gotcha. So, so we're, this isn't a huge, a huge expense or a huge amount?
It's a very small revenue stream, yes.
Okay. So we're crippling over five cents and 13 cents?
Yes.
Okay. A big sale item. Got you. Thank you.
Probably, yes. Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 7-1.
Item 3 is the recommendation to award the contract for Community Way. Is there a motion? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the recommendation to award contract unit number 2018-4 for Community Way New Storm Sewer Water Main and Street Construction, Ficker and Sons Incorporated for the amount of $247,358.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Langdon. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 8-0.
Item 4 is the recommendation to award the Province Terrace Trail. Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the recommendation to approve the recommended award of contract unit number 2019-2, Province Trail Trail, Nature's Way to U.S. Highway 10 to State Highway 114, Yankee General Contractors Incorporated, in the amount
There's a motion and a second. I'm not sure who you got. Alderman Langdon? Any discussion? Alderman Repella?
Ah, thank you, Mayor. Brian, this, I know you've mentioned it earlier, but the Province Terrace Trail is going to go behind Quick Trip, and it's just going to extend to the Province, the Nature's Way Trail, or Nature's Road. So it's going to cost $641,000 to go from behind, like, kind of behind Quick Trip through the swamp and connect up with the Nature, Nature's Way?
The only thing I'd add to that is, it would actually, the trail would start in front of Quick Trip.
Gotcha.
Go about 500 or 600 feet east and then go north.
Okay.
So there's roughly the same amount of paved trail as there is boardwalk, about 2,600 feet.
Okay. And that, that's going to cost them $641,000 to, to do that work?
Yes.
We could not have the city workers do that? No? Not a possibility?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
You have to charge us five cents.
Thank you, Brian. I understand now.
It's color.
If anyone would like a map, Director Jacobs does have a map. The trail basically connects the end of the Province Terrace Trail, which runs from Midway Road along Festival through, next to the fire station and down to Nature's Way, and it ends at that point, at Nature's Way. So it starts there and goes through the wetlands, it comes out behind Quick Trip, and connects back to the Friendship Trail, which ends at the corner of Oneida and Plank Road right now. Alderman Taylor?
Is the crossing included in this, to cross State Highway 10 or State Highway 114?
It's a crosswalk. Did you want to comment, Director Rodomski?
It is included to have the, have WISTAT upgrade that.
Is there a button for kids with push?
I don't recall the exact design that WISTAT was using, whether it was a push button or just an automatic walk signal. But they would have a walk signal to cross Highway 10 on the north leg.
And 114.
Yep. Well, yeah, I'd be, on the north leg and then the west leg where there's, crossing 114, there already is a crosswalk there, so...
And with a light?
They will be putting the lights in.
With the walk light, I'm saying, yeah. Okay, thank you. Again, I would like to see the financing here ahead of time, but the donations, it's not here. And on the motion, it was $641,638.75, not $638.00. So I think there should be a correction put in there on the amount.
I took the motion as it was printed on the agenda this evening. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a note about the cost of $641,000, roughly. That amount is about 50%, roughly 50% less than what we had originally thought the bits would come in at. So the cost is substantially, substantially lower than what we originally estimated.
And Alderman, Ted, Tom Grady also mentioned over there, too, there's a potential of grant money of $100,000 and even possibly $150,000 towards that amount.
Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. Josh, do you get to work with the DOT on the crossing, on what kind of crossing, what kind of lights goes, that's going to be put on for the crosswalk there? The reason I ask is because I go to the Appleton YMCA, and at the, you got the YMCA and the parking ramp across the street, what that intersection, they have the push button light that works. So every time somebody pushes that button to stop traffic, it stops it. Where a lot of them, you see, you know, you can push the button, push the button, it doesn't work. This one works. So I was wondering if you have any, get to discuss that with the DOT?
The DOT is doing the design of that intersection. Because it's a state highway, we have very little control. My guess is that they will be having it be a push button. It will work, but it will not work immediately, because there's significant traffic going through that intersection. So you may have to wait 30 seconds, 45 seconds to cross that road. That button is working.
Okay.
It will work. It just takes to the next signal cycle to actually actuate that walk signal.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 7-1.
And Item 9 is the recommendation to, for the proposed fee changes in the park and rec, rec programs. Alderman Langdon? Whoops, I don't know who was first. It should be Ted, because you're the committee.
Could be. Okay, could be. I'll move for the approval of the proposed fee changes to the 12 recreational programs for 2019. Park and Rec Board.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Kruger. And Alderman Langdon?
And, Mayor. Brian, question for you. I read that we are one of the higher communities for fees. Are we higher than everybody else that was mentioned out there?
Was that in our minutes, or?
No. It was just out and about that I saw that somebody mentioned that our fees are higher than everybody else's fees.
Well, I can, I can tell you that the 12 programs that you see here tonight, sometimes it's tough to compare apples to apples, because a, you know, program in one, playground program in one community might be, you know, done a little bit differently than how we do it, and, you know, a number of sessions and so forth. But I, in general, I would say that we are comparable or maybe a touch on the low side. I wouldn't say that we're on the high side, you know, with these programs. I, you know, frankly, we, we like to keep our programs affordable for families and young children, so, you know, I think the park board recognizes that and tries to be sensitive to that. So the programs you see tonight, I think that's the approach the park board took.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. I looked at these fees, and apparently, most of them, other than one, the last time they were changed was in 2017, which wasn't really that long ago. And I looked at these, and some of them, I felt, kind of went a little...
Um, so we're, we're pretty up to date on our fees after, you know, after this, I think.
I understand the desire for modest increases, and I appreciate them versus big jumps after a couple of years. But my question is, why were these 12 picked out and modified separately from the rest that were approved a month ago? I don't understand why they weren't just approved altogether.
So, so what the park board did is they get the, the full list of 200 fees or whatever that are out there, the cemetery and so forth, and they, they looked at all of them. And, um, these were the ones that they felt, um, you know, needed adjusting. You know, they, they looked at boat launch fees and so forth, and, and these were the 12 that they, uh, felt warranted a little, little bit of a change.
So in other words, they took out the ones they thought they warranted a change-- that warranted a change, approved the rest as one whole slate, and took some time to evaluate these individually?
Uh, they, they didn't approve the-- they just sort of left them untouched. I mean, if they're-- and if they're not touched, they stay the same. So if there's a, a fee recommendation, it comes to the, the council. And that's what these increases were-- that's why they're in front of you tonight.
All right. Thank you.
Alderman Repella?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, Brian, so in other words, just so I understand this, so take the first one, the playground, uh, the tot lot. So previous charge, last year, they were paying $17. You thought of putting a raise up to 20-- up to 20 for this upcoming year, but then you decided that wasn't enough? Now you're going to raise it to 22?
No, if you look way over to the left, the current charge is 20.
Correct. So the previous charge was 17. So it went from 17, maybe three years ago, to 20, right?
Uh--
So when was the previous charge? When were they charged 17?
Uh--
It's 2017.
2017.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, so the current charge in 2018 is $20, just to do the tot lot.
Yes.
And now in 2019, you want to raise it to 22?
27.
Or I'm sorry, up to-- no, 22.
That's non-resident. Oh, sorry.
Up to 22. So it's gone from 17 to 20 to 22. Is that correct, Brian?
That's correct. Yep.
Okay. Um, is there a charge-- do the low-income kids get to participate at a, at a different rate, or do they still have to pay the 17 or the 22 or the-- I should say, will they still have to pay the 22?
Well, we have a very active, um, you know, discount application program where families who, who are in need, uh, there's an application, there's a process that we follow, and we, we have 20 or so families every year that come forward, and, uh, generally, they, they receive half off. It's sort of been our standard, so that they would be at $11 in, in that example, if somebody would apply.
Okay. So those kids aren't being turned away?
No, they're not. And we're, we're actually quite generous in our, our-- we have some funds, you know, that we bring in, some fund dollars, so we're, we're able to, to be pretty generous, you know, when we-- when somebody does apply.
Understood. So technically, it's gone from 7-- you're going to go, kind of go from 17 to 22. I understand that. Gotcha. All right. Thank you very much.
Brian, did you want to comment on how we fundraise for those scholarship fees? And gives you a chance to plug that to the Alderman if they'd like to contribute?
Yeah, well--
I wasn't going to say that, but usually the Alderman contributes.
They have, and, and we do send a, a, you know, letter out to the community. There's a lot of businesses step forward and donate, you know, 100 bucks or whatever. So we, we take that money and track it and, and spend it wisely for these sorts of things.
Randy can fund it.
Alderman Taylor?
You should ask us. We all make the big bucks. Uh, something on fees, uh, just while we're touching on fees here, uh, out at the cemetery, is there a non-resident resident fee for, for graves?
There is. Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, is there-- you get a new fee for being a new resident out there?
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 6-2.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for January 10th through 17th. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of January 10th through January 17th, 2019, in the amount of $7,632,855.29.
There's a motion and a second from Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 8-0.
Item two is the beverage operators' license applications for 2017 through 19. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operators' license applications for the 2017 through 19 licensing period, as listed under approved in the Police Department's memo dated January 17th, 2019.
There's a motion and a second from Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 8-0.
Item three is the final assessments for the Ponds of Manasha Phase 1 and Lake Cottage-- and the cottages of Lake Park condominiums. Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the final assessments, assessable portion of unit 2018-2 in Ponds of Manasha Phase 1 and the cottages of Lake Park condominiums.
Is there-- there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of the change of agent for the Quick Trip, number 297, at 1499 Appleton Road, for the 2018 through 2019 licensing year.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Tom Grady. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 8-0.
Item five is the grade position for the Public Works Park Superintendent and the Director of Municipal Operations. Do we have a motion? Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the final assessments, assessable portion of unit 2018-2 in Ponds of Manasha Phase 1 and the cottages of Lake Park condominiums.
Is there-- there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 8-0.
Item four is the change of agent for Quick Trip on Appleton Road. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of the change of agent for the Quick Trip, number 297, at 1499 Appleton Road, for the 2018 through 2019 licensing year.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Tom Grady. Is there any discussion? Ready? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 8-0.
Item five is the grade position for the Public Works Park Superintendent and the Director of Municipal Operations. Do we have a motion? Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for the approval, place the Park Works slash Park Superintendent position at grade 12, and to move the Deputy Director of Municipal-- Municipal Operations position from grade 12 to grade 11, recommended by the Personnel Committee on 11/5/2018.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second by Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Alderman Repella?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, John, so how much of a pay-- so in other words, the, the Deputy Director of Municipal Operations, he's-- is he taking a pay cut to go from down from 12 to 11?
Goes the other way.
Oh. Right. So the, the, the Park Superintendent is at a 12, and to move the Deputy Director from 12 down to 11-- up to 11?
The hot-- the-- smaller the number, the higher the grade. So grade one would be the highest paid, grade, I don't know, 15 would be the lowest paid.
Understood.
And we set those salaries right in--
Yes. We did. We did.
So this was a oversight that we did not change those grades. We set the salaries back in November, but we didn't formally move those two positions to the correct grade when we did that. So this is more of a cleanup than a change of something that we've already done.
Yeah. Understood. Thank you very much.
Did I say greedy? Oh, I was going to say, I didn't think I said greedy. Any further discussion?
Not a grady. I guess one grady.
Oh, it took me a while. Now I get it. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion, motion carried on, roll call 8-0.
Item N is public comments on any matter that was listed on the agenda. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak? Yes?
Sandra Abel Taylor, 545 Broad. I just wanted to comment on a few things. There was a question regarding an email communication to the Plan Commission and Board of Review. I've brought it up several times. It's very hard for the public to attend all these meetings, especially when they're held at various times throughout the day. Manash Utilities meets at 7:30 in the morning. The Board of Review is 2 o'clock in the afternoon. The Plan Commission's at 3:30. Anyone who's working a traditional morning shift is unable to attend. Therefore, I typically try to either send a letter or send an email. From my understanding, all you need is to include your name. At one time, there was an address that was required. Furthermore, I do believe that one of the members of the Plan Commission was absent and actually sent an email in support of the TIF. So if, if they can send an email, I should be able to send an email. Under the redevelopment authority minutes, I don't have them handy, but I did have a question. I believe there was a comment by Alderman Nichols that there was an agreement that was proposed, but it would not be coming back to the RDA. And I was wondering why that was, or if I read that incorrectly. Um, because it was kind of like, why wouldn't it be coming back for approval? Kind of like it was handed over to staff, and they'd take it from there. Um, so I questioned that. And then regarding the design workshop for the Water Street Corridor, I think that should have happened before money was budgeted for the street. I still-- I was opposed to that budgeted item to, uh, proceed with designing street improvements to Water Street when we don't know what we're going to do there. If any of you recall, when the Marina was put in, when all the work was done with the Marina Place Apartments and the condominiums, Water Street disappeared. So let's just say we're not going to redo an entire street, only to have a developer come along and say, that's not what we really want. Now, it would have been one thing to designate those funds for shoreline improvements and a walkway along Water Street, because that is all public access, and that all belongs to the city. And I think that's what we still want to do, you know, having public access and restore that waterway. But to actually put in new road, I think, is putting the cart before the horse. And I think Alderman Taylor brought that up at the last meeting, and everyone kind of boo-hooed him. So, thank you.
So just for clarification, Mrs. Taylor, that's exactly what that process is all about, is deciding what it's going to look like before we build a road, so we don't do what you're afraid of. So, thanks for bringing that up. Seeing no one else, do we have a motion to adjourn? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.